Which defines the nature of our relationship, what's expected of them, what's expected of us, how we're gonna pay, when the money becomes available. And so, what you have before you tonight is the development agreement for the Audubon. The other application is for ASL Pewter or Tom and Patricia Hooper was not included in the TIP. So it required an application. And when you consider their application, the primary thing for you to do is, I have reviewed it relative to what they're requesting being eligible under the TIP. Sandra and I have had some conversations about that. And the other thing is, you need to make an opinion as to your perception of the feasibility of that. And there's a worksheet in their application that shows what their anticipated sales are, what their expected revenues are, and what increments they anticipate creating to recapture the money they're going to try and recapture. And I'm not gonna steal their thunder, I'm gonna let them talk to you about that. And Sandra's been working with these people for quite some time, so I'm gonna turn the floor over to Sandra to introduce them.
Well, I, thank you, Martin. I, as Martin said, have been meeting with the Hoopers for some time now. Martin has met with them, Mayor Grohler has met with them, Petrie has met with them. And they've been looking at our community for some time now, and we're very, very pleased that they have selected St. Genevieve and they will be relocating here from another tourism-oriented community in Missouri. And we're very pleased, and they wanted to share a little bit with you about who they are and what they do, and this seemed like an excellent opportunity to do that. So with that, I have the pleasure of introducing to you Tom and Patricia Hooper, currently from Louisiana, Missouri, but shortly to be from St. Genevieve, Missouri.
It's okay, throw my stuff. Knocked it away.
Hello.
And we brought a couple of catalogs and things, whether to kind of give you a visual idea of what some of the things that we do. We've been, I've been a craftsman, making a living with my hands for over thirty-five years. And Patricia's been working with me for twenty-five years. And we have settled a little over twenty years ago on working with Pewter exclusively. And we make it for both the retail and wholesale marketplace. We have over two-hundred-and-fifty wholesale accounts that we send things off to, you know, through the post office, and do a couple of wholesale trade shows, as well as doing about fifteen arts and craft shows throughout the year, depending on, you know, what the weather is, what the timeframe is, and how our retail sales in our location are going. And we've been, we settled in Louisiana, Missouri, and had a retail shop there for over eight years. And we have, you know, like other communities, that community has suffered greatly, and is kind of in a spiral, and they don't have a plan on how to get away from that. And just Pat and I were down here in, and before we moved to that location, we actually came down here to look at St. Genevieve. And at that time, we didn't quite know what we needed or wanted for our building and, you know, to work with this full-time. And the eight years of experience in Louisiana have really given us an opportunity to find out what works and what doesn't work. And coming down here, we found a building that I think that will satisfy a lot of our needs, and also can be an asset to the community by taking a building that's not being utilized right now and turning it into a showcase that can attract tourism from around the whole country.
I see a couple of you paging through Early American Life Magazine. I brought that specifically because it's the Directory of Traditional Crafts edition. We've been in the directory for over ten years, every year we're in it, and very pleased to be in it. We also do a show currently in our shop, and this is something that would transfer with us, where we bring artists who are in the Midwest, who are in the Early American Life Directory of Traditional Crafts, into our shop to have a small show. And we've been doing that for, this was our ninth annual?
Ninth year.
Ninth annual?
We get as many as, you know, five to six hundred guests over the weekend that specifically come for that event.
We advertise in Early American Life Magazine for that. We have had people from Florida, from California, that, "Oh, I saw this, I had to come see you." So I wanted to share that with you. There's more than just ourselves that we believe we bring to a community, and we're excited about the prospect of bringing that here.
If you look on the very back page of our color catalog, you'll actually get a look at what the inside of our current showroom and gallery looks like. And if you can kind of use your imagination-
That bottom picture.
-to see what that would be like in the front room of the building on Third Street. And we carry the work of sixty other artists to supplement in with our Pewter work, things that look like they belong, you know, in especially historic homes that people are decorating, or even wanting to take, you know, a keepsake home that has that, that nature.
We also brought a lot of things for show and tell that are on the back table. We can pass things around, or you can wait till later and go take a look at them, whatever works for you guys, just let us know.
We brought some spoon mold, one of the oldest molds in our collection. It came from England, and it is, was made in sixteen fifty. And it's just like any good tool, it's able to be used, you know, for, you know, many generations.
Because it was made right.
Also, we have a little bronze tray for casting an Art Nouveau mermaid. The tray is from eighteen eighty, casts a wonderful piece. And then some finished pieces, and the floral pieces that we brought that are decorated with ginkgo leaves and oak and acorn leaves and things, are pieces that are very much what is selling this season. There's also a piece that we coordinated with an effort to, with another person that is here from, in St. Genevieve now, Jill Kinnick from Acropolis Studios. And she did the photo engraving and laser work on the Washington University Brookings Hall, and we've been making that for them, for their fundraisers. She made the masters, we did the casting, and then make the pieces in Pewter. The candlestick is being featured this month in Southern Living magazine for an article on tabletop decorating for the holidays.
And that candlestick is cast in molds that date to about eighteen hundred. American-made molds that were made in a Philadelphia bronze foundry for Bucks County Pewters in Bucks County, Pennsylvania.
So the mold was made out of bronze?
Bronze brass. Some, we actually have a foundry that we work with that makes some aluminum molds, because Pewter is a very low-melt alloy. It is tin, copper, and antimony. It melts at four-hundred-and-sixty-five degrees, and we're actually able to do castings very near that temperature. And it, don't use the candlestick like that, the other end works better.
We call, we call our candlesticks Colonel Mustard. In the parlor with the candlestick.
Well, I have one that weighs about eight pounds, and so it's about twice as big as that.
You never know when you're gonna need an extra weapon in the house.
And so, and this is like this, and these customers come into the shop, and they want to touch things and pick things up and play. And while we're making things, they like to look over your shoulder and talk to you about it. And so we try to give people a history lesson, we bring home-school kids in, show them they can make a living with their hands and can do things. And then like this project we did with Jill, a combination of computer design and, you know, seven-thousand-year-old technology.
So, other than the display, if I, when we come into your shop, could you kind of describe, describe the process we'll be seeing?
Well, what we're, our plan is, in the very front of the shop, there's two walls, both brick walls. On one wall will be a lathe where we do the metal spinning, and I don't have an example of a spun piece out there, but we do vessels that are flat sheets of metal that we manipulate over wooden forms while it's turning on a lathe. And I actually brought a form, one of the forms that I, and also a finished piece, and that I manipulate them with wooden tools. And we can make everything from coffee pots and large half-gallon pitchers, punch bowls, all down to little shot glasses. And those are kind of, you know-
So this is a finished piece. This piece is also being featured in Southern Living magazine this month. This is actually the form that that piece is spun on. This start, so this, this body starts as a flat sheet of metal that's moved into shape over a break-apart form, in this case, it's a metal form. And we call it a break apart because it comes this way.
And it's a puzzle inside.
And these pieces will come out just like sections of an orange. Because, of course, if they didn't come apart that way, you'd never get this section out of that piece. So people will be able to watch that process.
So we're forming and spinning those pieces, and then on the opposite wall, which would be the south wall that has the window on that wall, will have two metal furnaces that are basically crock pots. They're very small, they're about yay big around, about yay deep, but because metal is very heavy, they'll hold over a hundred pounds of Pewter. And they're electric-powered, and they are insulated, so you can even be just a matter of, just, you know, a hand breadth away from them, and you can just feel a little bit of warmth off them, but they don't give up hardly any heat. And they are, you know, lidded except when we're casting with them. And we cast the different molds. We will have four-foot-tall walls, the first three feet are solid walls and then plexiglass, so we can see things, but also be protected and not, and not touch them. And that gives us an opportunity to finish a piece to a point where it can be, it's safe for somebody to handle and hand it to them. When we're spinning the metal on that form, the metal never gets warm. If it never, if it gets to the point where you, it is so hot that you can't touch it, you've stretched the metal, and you've destroyed the integrity of the piece.
And you've probably already gone through it. If it's too hot to touch, you've gone through it. That one's dead. Which is why I don't spin. He spins. I made lots of holes.
And that, those are the basic processes. Then, of course, everything has to be, of course, the casting, you have to have a gate, which is the way the metal gets into the mold, and those are taken to the other rooms in the back, cut off with a bandsaw, and then we have different metal finishing tools, just like a woodworking shop, but we use, you know, grits of sandpaper and things that are appropriate for working with metal. Then we polish things up, and they're ready to go.
All right, let's talk about content of your proposal.
Okay.
And Pat is the one that wrote that, and I know there are some, some questions because of Pat going over and correcting her math to make sure that things were, were correct.
Well, I came up with thirty-three thousand, four-hundred-and-sixteen dollars and sixteen cents is what you're trying to recapture. Is that an accurate figure?
That's what I've got.
Okay. And provided this sheet, the kind of spreadsheet, which is part of the application?
Mm-hmm.
And this shows your estimated assessed value, which is the real estate.
Mm-hmm.
A two percent increase every other year, which was directed by the application.
Correct.
Because we don't know, but we expect the assessor will not devalue our property. Then, and the increments that that generates in the third column?
Mm-hmm.
Then you have your estimated sales. The two thousand and twelve base year had no sales for that-
Correct.
-that building. So all of the sales that are shown in the taxable sales are what you expect to do.
Correct.
And everything is, becomes an increment.
Right.
Because you're starting at zero. And then the, the rates that you see, the multiples are the, are our tax rate.
Mm-hmm.
So the, when it says multiply by point oh-five-one at the, at the top of the third column, you know, that's, that's our property tax for commercial, well, yours is kind of a mixed use. We're not sure how that's been worked out.
We don't know.
And the sales tax is, is point, point oh-two. So that, those are the dollars they will recapture. And you can see that they more than recapture the thirty-three thousand dollars that they're asking for, for, and so that'll happen somewhere about halfway, halfway through.
Or sooner if we can pull that off.
Or sooner. It happens as soon as it happens. But this is kind of their estimate of how it may flow. Yeah, we all hope that your expectations are conservative, or your estimates.
We tried to be as realistic as we could and err on the side of caution.
But this is kind of the critical point for your consideration, because ultimately, you're making a decision as to whether, based on the information they have provided to you, is it reasonable? And, and if you consider it is reasonable, is it adequate? Does it, does it look like it's gonna provide the amount of revenue needed for them to recapture the, the money that they put in their application? Honestly, you know, it would be a unique situation that I would ever bring you one of these without having made that preliminary determination. But if, meeting with the applicant and expressing my reservations, they just absolutely wanna come talk to you about it, that might happen. In this one, it's pretty easy. It looks like it's gonna work.
Martin, would it bear a note of explanation, since this is technically the first application slash agreement under the new downtown TIP, to maybe talk about how this one, they're not asking for money upfront, and this TIP, they spend the money and then this comes back to them at a later date? Because this is a little different than what you're used to with the other TIP.
There's no financial commitment on the part of the city, except to pledge to them the increment, both real estate tax and property tax, that they create above the two thousand and twelve base year, payable annually. So at the end of the year, as the taxes come in, they will be put in a special account. And, and there'll be an account, one account, accounting for the TIP district as a whole, and then individual accounts for their, their revenues. And, and as they generate the tip, the increment, at the end of the year, they get whatever it is, until the thirty-three thousand is, is paid back.
You all remember too, though, and I know it's certainly been explaining to you, that the district has to make the base before we, and we've, we've probably, at least property tax-wise, have devalued the, the area since when we started, just by a few of the, a few expensive buildings probably went, went off the tax rolls and then went to not-for-profit. So it may take us a while to get back up to that point where you're starting to-
Right, on that portion, on the real estate portion of it.
Right.
And it's pretty much up to us to generate the tax numbers on the other side of it.
In fact, you're starting from zero on the, on the sales tax side.
That makes it nice.
A real plus, yeah, for that. And, and we, when we had our retail location, which we still have in Louisiana, the first couple of years that we were there were phenomenal. You know, we had, we had over a hundred thousand dollars in sales in the first three year, each year, in the first three years. And then we had, I don't know if you studied, you know, personal politics and things going on there, but it seems like nobody wants to come to Louisiana because we're not quite Ferguson, but we're close.
Well-
Ferguson, New York.
Yeah, yeah, there, there's, and, and most people north of St. Louis or St. Louis know about a lot of the stuff, and it is affecting almost every retail location up there dramatically, in a negative way.
Even if we, the, the district doesn't make the base in any given year or a couple of years, doesn't mean that the increment you generated goes away.
No, no, it is there, but you have, yeah, you have, you have hit your threshold before you can distribute.
Right.
I have a question, as to why this is all under Tom and Patricia Hooper and not ASL Pewter?
Because our accountant wanted us to purchase the building in our name, and since it's that lot, you know, in the sense the tax, a lot of things are paid through our name rather than the corporation.
Okay.
The corporation will be leasing the commercial space from us.
Okay.
And that's just the way that he wanted it structured. And he's always been very good to us, so.
And actually, the bank agreed, because it's much easier for the bank to do the financing to individuals than it is to the corporation. It just made it easier.
And that's okay with cities and others?
We're certainly not gonna tell them how to do their business.
Okay.
And any individual would even be eligible for TIP funds.
Oh, okay.
It doesn't have to be this.
Yeah, likewise, the distribution will be made to them as individuals, which I guess the environment will eventually admit as well.
So, when, when they're generating new sales tax, if they, let's say they consign part of the building to someone who's selling flowers or something, that sales tax would, would be also segregated from, any, any sales tax generated inside the building, is that how you're looking at it?
Yeah, it's point of sale.
Yeah, point of sale, for, for that address, for that tax block.
So it doesn't matter whether your business pays the sales tax or not, the project would still be generating the sales tax?
Or a tenant.
Or a tenant, yeah, yeah. Yeah, if something happened to us and we, and we would still live there and lease the building, that sales tax would then-
I don't think so.
Sales tax would be applied to the ground.
Yes, we don't care who owns it. As soon as they have a tenant.
Okay, well, you're on the regular agenda for a vote tonight. We wanted to do this in the less formal setting of a work set.
Right, yes, any other questions, any of the numbers there that you can't read, there were a couple of, people had questions about earlier that we clarified, but if there's anything else, you know, we'd love to have an opportunity to make sure that everybody understands what we're doing. And then also, this is new, new to us, so this has been an educational experience for us, you know, learning some of these things.
Just for clarification, on page one of attachment two, Three Doors From Hoopers is six-eleven-twenty-two, and on page two, the marketing is sixty-eight-hundred.
I think I guessed right.
And I apologize in advance for my sloppy writing, but I wasn't gonna redo it again.
So, the board's action tonight is a, an ordinance that requires two readings, generally. What is your schedule? I know you kind of gave us this schedule in your application, but how, how important is time?
Well, and the thing is, as soon as we have a second reading and have an approval, and I know the process is, it requires two readings and a vote, we're, we're ready to begin, you know, work on the buildings, the contractors have been contacted, we're just waiting for that time. And the sooner that we get it built, and the little remodels and things in there, and a couple of things we need to do for, for, you know, safety issues and, and the exit signs, then we can, we can occupy and create sales tax numbers.
Are you, are you saying you're going to wait until our second reading before you would start?
According to what I understood from the regulations, we can't do any of the work until it's been approved.
Yeah, we, I can't even, can't even order a washer, you know, or a hammer or nail until the approval. It's, it's, everything's being staged.
We close tomorrow morning. Does that help? Do I wanna start now?
Your, your closing isn't contingent on this action.
No, we're, we're closing anyway.
Not at all.
But the sooner we can get going, the sooner we're here.
Right, and, and, and this was not one of our intentions when we came here, was to even apply for the, the TIP program, it was just presented to us as something that would be possibly beneficial to us. And so we said, well, let's, let's look at it.
Will your shop in Louisiana still be up?
TIP was an essential element of your investment decision.
Right, yeah. We, basically, until this is completed, then we are, we basically are a month, month lease where we are. And so as soon as we start working, as soon as we can get this, the first thing is to get, there's, I think, twelve elements that need to be completed for an occupancy permit. We wanna do that first, so that we can come down here, spend the weekend, work, work with the contractors and do some things, bring some things down, and, and stage and get ready for an opening. And then, and we'll continue with our shop up there, because most of our workspace is there, and we have a major show the first weekend of February that we need to create inventory for. It is a wholesale trade show where we're actually allowed to deliver products, so if you watch it or if you watch ten of something, they can carry them away with them. And last year, last year it was terrible. We had snow and ice, and we were able to deliver less than, you know, oh, twenty percent of what we normally do. And that kind of set the, the year not, off on not a good foot. And we've now recovered from that, and we're currently now even working on the inventory list for that. We're gonna build as much of that stuff, you know, while, while we're waiting to move into the building, we're just gonna be making as much product as we can. We want our shelves to be full, we wanna be able to, you know, get everything open, go back to this wholesale trade show, because it, it's basically, we, we deliver product to about seventy-five wholesale trade accounts and get new orders. One of our wholesale accounts that we got this last year is at Plennial Williamsburg, and we sell pieces to them, and they've become a very important wholesale client for us. And so we need to be out there to, you know, to do that. And, you know, so our timeline is, we really like to be open, you know, I'd love to be here for Christmas. I don't know if it'll happen, but we will, we'll be working, you know, diligently working towards that. And the sooner that we can get started on the project, because, you know, the contractor we're using, our contractors that, you know, have other people that they need to take care of as well.
Once we are here full-time, the shop in Louisiana will close.
Yeah, basically, and we-
We can only be in one place at once.
Yeah, there's, there's-
We tried it the other, it doesn't work.
So, yeah. And we're, we're working, I have a full-time employee that's been with me for eight years, and he would love to relocate, but his wife is saying, "Let's move to Florida."
Hey, this is almost Florida.
Well, yeah, and then also, and when we, when we are here, we will probably be hiring at least one part-time person, and then as we settle in, probably a full-time person that we, we would work through a training program as an apprentice. And I started off that way, and he's become a real integral part of our, our process. And we pretty much, we have a show next weekend in Connecticut. And then the weekend before Thanksgiving, we are in York, Pennsylvania, without really shows to the East Coast, because we can do a smaller show here in the, in the Midwest and make a fair living. But if we travel to the East Coast, we can make four times a fair living.
So we need to do two readings tonight, that would be very advantageous, if it's passed the first time, we do a second reading, get this evening.
If, it's up, it's up to you, but you can see, I guess, maybe how it would be beneficial-
That would be a great benefit, because then we can contract, contact the gutters that need to be redone, contract, you know, just have them, they're needing the inside building, they can begin working on that. And I think a lot of the, the product that is listed in these, I've gone online and found distributors that I have wholesale contracts with, that I can actually buy things at, you know, at a very good price, so we can stretch the dollars, you know, and get, and have those, those things delivered down here, ready for the contractors.
If you all feel that it's pretty cut and dried as far as you're concerned and are comfortable with it, and you can feel like, like, I mean, it's really up to you, if you want, if somebody wants to make that motion when it comes time, and you're okay with it, that's up to you to do, so.
I wanna move them by the Christmas walk.
Hello?
That'd be awesome.
Come on, anyone?
I wanna move them by the Christmas walk. That'd be awesome.
Yeah, that, unfortunately, that's the thirteenth, I believe it is.
It's the first weekend, first full weekend of December.
We, we have-
We're at a Christkindle Market.
We've been committed to a Christkindle Market. However, you know, I hate to cancel a show, and I think that's not fair for, for anyone.
But we may figure out a way to-
We may, we may send my apprentice and his lovely wife up there. Well, they have, their, their twins just turned a year, and they did a show for us this weekend at the Botanic Garden, the best Missouri market, and they'd had a phenomenal show and had a phenomenal time, and got them out and away from the kids for the first time in a year.
Which made them both very happy.
There you go.
All right.
So there, there are possibilities.
Yeah, and there's, you know, and we can always, we can always come down and at least, you know, open a temporary portion of the front of the shop.
Have a presence or something.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Well, what we do is that, the whole, that front room, we would, you know, we would make sure that it's ready, because as you can see from the back page of the, of the catalog, we really, we do have the displays, we do have the product, we, you know, we wanna make sure that, that we have a full store that has, is a great ex- we want to make sure that we have a full store that has, is a great experience for any pest where it comes in, you know. And we were really impressed, we were here in August with my 85-year-old parents and my 12-year-old grandson, and we were having lunch at the Old Brick, and we had 18 people walking around town with little flyers in their hand, looking for things to do. You know, and it's like, "Right around the corner, you know, and next year, we'll be there." And so, you know, and that really was nice to see that, because we haven't seen that in the community where we're at in probably five or six years.
Well, it's great to have you. Thanks for choosing here.
Any other questions you guys have, you know, about anything?
You're going to be on Third Street again?
I know.
We'll be on Third Street again, I've been trying to get away from that.
183 instead of 123.
I'm going to see all the typos with that. I'm going to find out who 123 is and go apologize in advance to them.
And if any of you have any other questions about our appropriateness, I will direct you to our artist statement. This, the second paragraph of which will tell you what we've done, what some of our recognition has been, and also a little bit about our involvement with statewide organizations and our communities, which has always been important to both of us. So it, we're not just moving our business, we're moving ourselves and we're moving our belief in a community, so. And I figure if you don't blow your own horn, who's going to do it for you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the application of, I forget what you call it.
Audubon.
Audubon, LLC.
It's not, it's not an application, it's an agreement.
Or the agreement, yeah. The application process was done by, with the TIF.
Before we move forward, I just want to point out a typo on second page, second full paragraph, the address. It says 183 South Third, I think. It was maybe just not replaced.
Yes, okay, got it. Wherever it says 183.
That was the only one I saw.
Those two.
Oh, those two?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, got it. So Bob's going to change his application.
This is the second part of the process. Once you get your application approved and things set up, then there has to be an agreement between the city and the developer as to how this will work in the future. And I guess we started working on this document about a year ago, wasn't it Martin, with the lawyers and trying to figure out what it is and the peculiarities of this particular TIF versus TIFs of other TIFs around the state? Really, the major part of it is the first six, seven, eight pages, and it really describes how this will work between the city and us, and the back parts are the signed agreements and notarized agreements for all of that, and the requirements that go along with it. A few things changed a little bit in our process, and you probably wonder, when are we going to open? We sometimes wonder the same thing, but we're getting very close. It has been an experience dealing with the rehabilitation of the historic structure and putting modern codes in with that, but it's been, as I said, a very learning experience. I'm glad I'm going through it, not every day, but most days. But I think you can see that it's significantly changing the look of that corner as we move forward, and you'll see a lot more in the next two or three weeks. When we first came to you, we talked about doing a banquet center upstairs. As we got into the project, we learned that the church is putting in a banquet center in their new building here, and we didn't really think that we needed two of them downtown. And so we're going to change the upstairs to a mercantile area. We'll have space in the front for four little shops, and I really like these kind of people coming to St. Genevieve, we need more of them to do our, and I'm putting my tourism hat on now, I think we need to have a whole bunch of them, those kind of people in our downtown area to help our tourism. So, we're going to, the upstairs will be mercantile, and it's all been structured for that. And the dining will be on the main floor and subsequently in the basement. But it, we found out early in the process, not early, but that it's a lot more expensive than we thought it was going to be, and that's why we had to make some changes too as we went along. But we can see the light at the end of the tunnel now. As part of this process, we have to come in and give you all the documents, the contracts that we've had, and the bills and all of that, to show you that we have done the work that we said we were going to do, and the cost meets that million dollars that we're asking for.
Exhibit E of this is a listing of eligible expenses, all of which are checked, because they're doing a lot of things. But the cap is a million dollars, but even then, as they submit their documentation, we will have to confirm that it is four eligible items. Now, under this TIF, there isn't a whole lot that isn't eligible, as long as it's redevelopment. Other, you know, just new construction isn't possible.
We're pretty used to doing that with the historic tax credits, you have qualified rehabilitation expenses, and they are very persnickety, and they're being audited by an outside auditing firm to make sure that everything's right when we submit those bills, so.
Now, since this isn't an application, and we don't have the kind of analysis that the Hoopers provided on projected increments, you certainly have considered that.
Yes.
If you had to kind of pick a period of time for recovery within the next 22 years, what do you think it is?
It would probably be 15 to 20. I mean, that's, and that's one of the reasons we also decided to go to mercantile. That is another way to get more of the sales tax coming into the base here, and rather than a banquet center, which you may only use once a week or once every two weeks, we see this as a better opportunity for increasing the economic benefit here in the downtown area. We will have an elevator in the building. It is sprinkled.
The building is, not just the elevator.
No, yeah. Any questions you might have?
Is there anything not covered or taken?
Well...
Just about everything.
I'm not sure about, I mean, tables and silverware, that sort of thing. No, we pretty much gutted the building. All new electrical, all new plumbing, new roof, new HVAC, new windows.
Apparently not, okay. Yeah, that's okay.
I guess this takes also two readings to...
Does.
It was posted down on our scarecrow this week, yeah.
Somebody said they saw liver dumplings on that.
Well, sure, you're, we're in St. Genevieve.
We need more liver dumplings.
You know my wife said, "We need something that would be different from St. Genevieve too."
Well, come down, I'll be glad to show you our menu, I think you'll find it is different. Well, we can appeal to all kinds of tastes. On one side would be our food, and the other side would be finer dining, and I think everybody can find something they're going to like.
Are we going to be open seven days a week?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Sunday brunch, but not regular breakfast.
Do you have a projected capacity?
Not exactly, we're working that out right now. You have projected capacities based on square footage by code, but then when you have to put all the tables in there, it comes out something a little less than that. For four-floor building and all that, that's how you have to calculate it. We're very close on that, so we had to equip the people down the other day, working on that.
Man, did you say the basement would be used for dining also?
Eventually, not right at the beginning.
Does that have a nice little room down there, I recall?
Yeah, I know it's used for parties. We have the ability to shut off the north end again like it used to, what used to be called the bulletproof room, and we can have two private dining areas, meetings there. I hope pretty soon we can give you all a tour of the place.
Yeah, I'm ready. I'd like to see it.
Construction, really, I know. Thank you.
The other item here is not for consideration, but you know we've been working on revisions to the building, though one of Jimmy's last official acts was working with Petrie to finalize that. I don't necessarily want to present that tonight, but we did include in your packet the bill that we will consider at the next meeting for adoption, amending the building codes. Jimmy's agreed to come back, a half-hour work session prior to that meeting, because I, we only got like 15 minutes, I don't know, we had enough time to cover it all. But we've included it for your review, and then look forward to coming in 6:30 on the 23rd to discuss it before the bill is considered at the regular meeting. Now, I'm going to put Petrie on the spot. An alderman said to me, I hadn't met Petrie, and I said, "Well, she was introduced." They said, "Well, I know, but we didn't really get an opportunity to talk," and so we're going to take the next 10 minutes to meet Petrie. So anybody has any questions for Petrie, fire away.
Did you read it?
Did I read that? I typed it. Yes, I read it. I didn't read the entire 2012 code, but I was relying on Jimmy for that. The new codes, we're getting up to date, so.
Oh, wait, we, just, why are we doing this?
Giving it to you for, you have in your hands, and next Thursday.
No, I know that.
Why are we doing it?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Every three years, the International Code Council, who produces the code that you have adopted for St. Genevieve, revises it. And they make sometimes major changes, mostly minor changes. The insurance industry likes for communities to be current in the, or have a current code adopted, but everybody knows that nobody's going to adopt a new code or revision every three years. So you wait a code cycle, you do it every six years. Sometimes you wait two code cycles to do it. But at some point, if you don't do it, then it's viewed as a negative, and presumably the changes that are made are made because of things that have happened in the industry that they need to update. And so, the, two years ago, the International Code Council faulted us, or ISO faulted us for not having adopted more contemporary standards. We didn't, you know, jump into the river because of that. But we have been working on it and talking about it for the last two years. So adopting 2012, you know, kind of, it's just time to upgrade it. Now, we put together a committee of an architect and a citizen who has been doing some remodeling in town, and a builder, and we went through every change in the code. And the mayor participated, and we decided what we wanted to keep, what we didn't want to keep, what we thought made sense, and what didn't make sense, such as sprinklers in residential houses. If you just adopted the code without looking at it, you're going to adopt that regulation. And after much discussion, we said, you know, that's just, you know, that's over, kid. The, so, the changes that were made in here kind of reflect that committee's opinion of local amendments that we should adopt as we adopt the 2013 international code, to make sure we aren't creating a rule or a regulation that just doesn't make sense for St. Genevieve. And that's kind of what we have in front of you, is the outcome of that committee's work. Yes. When are you going to add the carbon monoxide?
It's under...
It's in, we put it in.
It's under F, the International Property Code, and it's the section right before G. I'm sorry that these pages aren't numbered, but it's the last full page. You'll see it says H, section 603.8, carbon monoxide alarms. It's right above G. The National Electric Code, right above that.
And we consulted, Bob Vonnell was part of that discussion, as to where, from his experience, it was most practical to put them, and so his opinion is reflected in that language.
I think we did a little bit of research, and today you can get a smoke and carbon monoxide all in one, and I think they're about $50, that we, what we determined. So if you have a hallway that has three entrances to three bedrooms, one would do the trick for all three.
Well, just the carbon, assuming you have a smoke detector.
Right, right, right.
The carbon monoxide detector isn't $50, it was...
16.
16.
16, yeah. But if you buy the combination, it's 50.
Right.
Yeah.
And new construction would have to have a combination.
Yes.
System as part of the new construction.
They have to be hardwired.
Okay, we'll look forward to that discussion before our next meeting.
I loved it.
Anything else to say about that should work session?
I know, me too.
When are we going to talk about the list of items that we would consider spending money on out of the applies to TIF funds? We have a list, and in the paper, I didn't get a chance to read the paper, but boy, I've heard about it in the paper, I've heard, I've heard and heard about it in a day and a half that...
Do you want to do that next, before, you want to do it before a meeting?
I don't know that we need to do it before a meeting, I mean, I just want to, I mean, your money is earmarked, that's not correct, right? That's not true.
That's not true.
Okay.
Except for the grant match.
Right.
Everything else is on the table.
Well, we just need to make sure before we get any deeper in any of these projects, or we have to sign any agreements that rely on that money, that we have a very robust discussion. Well, we just got the appraisal back, so that was kind of the next step as far as knowing where we stand, and, yeah, we do need to have those discussions about even some more options that to consider. So, just in the minute or two we have here, the Archdiocese is willing to sell us the land needed for the hiking biking trail for how much?
We don't know. The appraisal valued it at $8,000 later.
But it's contingent on the city using funds to build a road to a private school support complex. Is that, is that part of the negotiations? Were we at, I'm not making an accusation, I want to, the way it came out of the paper, help me understand where we're at, as part of the...
We haven't entered in negotiations, we asked them if they approved this conceptually and got it signed off by the Archdiocese, we go state that, in order to proceed, because if they said no, we're not going to consider anything.
Yes, no.
And when we met with the committee, as part of that discussion was, if we do this, we'd like for you to do that. And we have interpreted that to be a condition, but, you know, we haven't had a formal discussion, so I don't know that...
Okay.
No, that answered my question clearly.
I have a lot of questions about this, too, and I think we'll talk about that later.
Well, I, you know, it's kind of, it kind of, Tom's right, you kind of hate to do it in front of a meeting, sets an artificial deadline for you, so if you want to pick another night, let's go ahead and do it.
I don't care when you pick a night.
Well.
Well, I mean, scheduling wise, I don't, I never care, but if I can be there, I'm going to be here, but if I can't, I can't. But I don't know that we need to talk too much more about it until negotiations, so we can understand what the Archdiocese wants in return.
No, I think we need to make certain decisions about what direction we want to go. I mean, I think we need to know that we're on the same page.
Gotcha.
Before we stand in front of the finance committee.
Right, right. Okay. Yeah, anytime, fine by me, I'll be here if I can't meet you.
Okay.
No, you stand in front of the finance committee when you're going to have five people voting over against it.
Well, it might be unanimous, yes.
Yeah, I know, I'm just saying, yeah.
And you need to decide which is the best option that you want us to go there with, whatever that might be with the amount of money that we've got left to deal with.
So, what evening next week would you like to meet?
Can we do this before our next regular meeting, or do we have to meet?
Well, the question is whether it's going to take, we're going to do the building code before the next regular meeting. We can do this, we could move it up a little bit to make sure we have enough time to do both.
Let's do that.
I don't know how long this discussion's going to take, it might.
I have no idea.
You don't either. So, I mean, you want to schedule it for in front of the next regular meeting?
I'd rather do that.
And get together at four or six?
That's fine.
I'm going to be out of town.
Okay, Teddy.
How do we know where this is even going to go, how long it's going to take? It might be a five-minute deal.
I don't have no clue.
It might be a two-hour deal.
I agree.
Right, I think you're right there.
It's got to be separate, separate night.
All right, I'd like to be there.
Okay, Tuesday night?
The fourteenth or the twenty-first.
Okay. Anybody good, Tuesday?
The fourteenth.
You want to do six or seven?
Six.
About there, six? Six o'clock Tuesday?
That's fine.
You okay?
Yeah. All right. You going to have a packet of some sort, Martin?
We'll have all the information that you need.
Are we getting that Friday?
If I can be here, I will be here.
What is today?
Today's.
We ain't going to get it for Friday, I'm sure.
Which is tomorrow.
Unless you have something. You got enough to put something together for us for tomorrow?
I got everything I'm going to have for Tuesday night.
Okay.
So, yeah, well, it's basic. Some of it I can't reproduce easily. I mean, the plans for, you know, the engineering drawings, I can email them to you, I have them in electronic form. Actually, I have everything in electronic form.
I would like to see a lot more email communication really from your office about all kinds of things, so I'm all for that.
Mary.
The world uses it.
I would be more than happy to communicate whatever I know, whatever that you think you need to see.
Just anything that, you know, I mean, just anything you think that we ought to, you know, be abreast of so we don't get surprises and things. Phone calls I've been getting, this really mostly just this afternoon, that people interpreted out of the newspaper that this is all a done deal, we're going to spend a lot of money.
Here. Alderman Couch.
Here.
Alderman John Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Hook.
I'm here.
Alderman Donald Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Ross. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Approve the agenda?
We approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, at this time, it's my pleasure to present a proclamation and a plaque to Mr. Jimmy Jones, who is retiring from us, and I'd just like to quickly read this thing. This proclamation before I give it to Jimmy. So, whereas the City of St. Genevieve has deemed it important that all homes and buildings meet modern health and safety codes, and whereas the City of St. Genevieve is a town which has an abundance of historical important structures, and whereas the City of St. Genevieve believes it is important for properties and home be maintained demonstrating the care and character of its inhabitants, and whereas the responsibility to ensure adherence to the City St. Genevieve's standards has fallen chiefly on its Building Inspector Jimmy Jones, and whereas Jimmy Jones has performed his duties faithfully and to the highest degree of professionalism for the last thirteen years, and whereas Jimmy Jones has unimpeachable integrity and concern for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of St. Genevieve, and whereas because of his diligence and deliberate commitment to his responsibilities, the homes, businesses, and other structures are safe and secure, and whereas Jimmy Jones is an outstanding employee, caring husband, father, and friend. The City of St. Genevieve hereby acknowledges and congratulates Jimmy Jones on a job well done and wishes him a long and happy retirement.
Give a speech?
Yeah. Good. Speech. Just personally, Jimmy, I appreciate you've been here as long as I've been here, and it's definitely been a pleasure. You always brought the common sense approach to things. Whenever things might get a little bit out of hand, you always were there to bring that and usually was, all the time was the right answer and could settle down a heated situation, and I appreciate you for it.
Thank you. Did you just, Jimmy?
Mayor, don't forget that he did put some humor into a lot of the stuff that he took care of for us.
Yeah, he did. He always did do that, too. Okay, Martin, I guess we're two years.
Okay, some of this we covered in the work session, but we received the appraisal for the property for the Parkwood Trail, and that allows us to go forward. We'll have a meeting, get a work session next Tuesday to discuss our options relative to those projects and the dollars involved. On the grant for the water system, the state signed a third-party agreement, sent it back to us. We signed it, sent it on to Cochran, Cochran's got to sign it and send it back to the state. And that'll allow them to begin work on designing the water system improvements that we anticipate. Lee Lottis contacted the adjuster, we got a letter from the insurance company, which basically said there was no negligence on the part of the city, and that's why they denied the claim. There was no significant detail, this is on Sandy Wyler's claim, beyond that, and I haven't heard from Ms. Wyler. Hoopers are here, you know, we're in the meeting with them, I put it in my report. We delivered to Harry Gag the proposal that was written by Mr. Elpers for the demolition of the building on Market Street, Merchant Street. He's got some concerns about some of the elements of that. I know that Alderman Hook saw him here today, I guess, and so has invited him to come meet with us and talk through whatever he may have a problem with, see if we can't work it out and proceed on that project. Failing that, we'll find another way to skin the cat, we'll get it done. The, you all are familiar with charter changeover that's happened. It hasn't been seamless, there have been some little problems here and there, but I think they've got them worked out now, and hopefully people are receiving the service they anticipate.
They're supposed to be clearing up that waviness on nine ninety, I don't know if they're.
Yeah, what that is, is the equipment downstairs isn't fed on a dedicated circuit, and so there's a, there's kind of some disharmony, kind of out of phase, and so they're changing over to put all of the equipment on one circuit, and that'll do away with that waviness, but it's.
They didn't give us timeframe on that?
You know, it's volunteer, board members doing it.
Oh, okay, okay. So, we're figuring.
It's our wiring.
Okay. I thought maybe they were going to help.
No, they've done everything they need to do, and they said the problem that we're having has nothing to do with their equipment.
Okay.
It's the electrical service and some, Bob Lys and Whitner, and they've been working on making the changeover. Those of you who've driven down North Main Street, if you look towards the river, you will see some work has been done. Burlington Northern has some equipment down there doing some right-of-way maintenance, and so they cleared a path down the drainage ditch that needs to be opened. The county and Felix Meyer got the backhoe over there that they were using on the workforce grant and got some clearing done. They need to go back when it dries out and now dredge it down to grades, so it drains. Once we get that established, Alliance, I talked to Steve, we'll stick the camera up the line and see where the blockage is and the culvert that goes underneath. If we can jet it out with our equipment, we'll just do it. If it's something that our equipment can't dislodge, we'll call Burlington Northern and tell them how many feet in it is and what it is they have to do, and hopefully they'll respond by opening that drain pipe.
And North Main was muddy as hell to get in the day, going up to the river.
Yeah, because all that water couldn't get out, and it just.
Just sits there.
Sits there. As soon as it dries up, we'll go in with our sweeper and clean it up. The, we talked about the code review, talked about the seven ninety-eight. The last item was the planning meeting. Two items were approved for special use permits. Those will be on your agenda for October the twenty-third. The reason they won't be this Thursday is because of the statutory notice period for rezoning, and so we had to wait fifteen days after, to get it on a Board of Aldermen agenda. So, that puts it on for the twenty-third. You have the final say, because a special use permit is treated like a rezoning, and so it'll be considered at that time. In the case of Chamed, they're going to engage in some commercial activities that wouldn't otherwise be allowed in an R-one zone district, so this is the appropriate way to allow that. And then, in the case of the special road district, I understand that property was owned by the county and was annexed into the city. Everything that's annexed to the city comes in R-one, so R-one was an inappropriate zone for their maintenance facility. So, when they wanted to expand it, we couldn't issue them a permit to expand their lawfully nonconforming use. So, we need to do a special use permit so that everything's brought into line and then we can give them their building permit. Any questions?
I guess, is that the way they always, back in that day, everybody's just messed up the business or anything?
Every business that was in existence prior to the adoption of planning and zoning was zoned R-one, but every business is allowed to continue their operation as a lawfully nonconforming use. But you can't expand a lawfully nonconforming use above certain percentages for the building and the land use. So, if you're using half your lot and then all of a sudden you want to use your whole lot, well, that's a problem. And it gets resolved by either rezoning it or by the special use vehicle. The problem with rezoning has to do with spot zoning. So, if you have a lot in the middle of R-one, and you can't just go in and say, okay, now it's going to be industrial. So, you do it with a special use permit that allows you to permit the activity, but to condition it so that it doesn't create conflicting land uses, doesn't harm the neighbor. So, you might allow a commercial activity and put hours of operation on, so they don't have late-night noise, and that kind of thing.
Staff reports, any committee reports? Okay, go to the minutes of September the twenty-fifth.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, resolution two thousand fifteen oh one, a resolution reappointing Zomer Zude to be St. Genevieve Park Board.
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Zomer's been on there good while, hasn't he?
Yeah, he has, and I was just going to say, if anybody knows anybody that would like to, we still have an opening or two on the park board.
Three.
For three?
Three open.
Probably. So, if anybody knows anybody that'd like to get on the park board, please let us know. Okay, old business, bill number thirty-nine ninety-three, second reading.
An ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, authorizing Fifth Street to become one-way from Market Street to Washington Street, northbound.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Alderwoman Codwell, yes. Alderman Couch.
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Hook.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Seven, yes, zero, no's, one absent, bill number thirty-nine ninety-three now becomes ordinance thirty-nine thirty-one.
What's the procedure on that? Do we have a grace period or something, or are people going down there after we, I guess if we put signage up, then they're illegal.
Right.
Yeah. So, you talk to the.
You said discretion.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah.
I was wondering.
He wasn't there a minute ago.
I had to get a grant.
But anyway, we're going to put signs up tomorrow, is that what we're up to now, or are we?
My understanding is.
Just curious.
I don't know if we've got the, you know, if we've got signs and stuff.
Right. We've got a figure placement also, whatever.
Yeah, my understanding is we'll probably notify everybody in writing down there, also ask in the paper.
Good.
And other agencies, media sources help get some notice, and then probably issue for November first or thirty days out from now, give them some grace period, but I don't know, I mean, it depends on you guys if you want to go and put them up and just not make it enforceable until then, or.
I think we have to locate and all that stuff.
I think we just put them up and then we maybe, we can take it.
Yeah.
For a couple of weeks.
Yeah, have a grace period.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not going to.
Yeah, we're certainly not.
No, we don't want to give tickets out for that.
No.
Good. Okay. As soon as they're available, I'm sure Dave will get them out, you know, locates and all that stuff, we.
Good place.
We're going to have to make sure they're very well placed. Okay, new business, bill number thirty-nine ninety-four, first reading.
An ordinance authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement and other related actions in connection with the redevelopment of certain property in the downtown St. Genevieve tax increment financing district, authorizing the execution of a TIF note in connection therewith, prescribing the form of set agreement and notes, and authorizing other related actions in connection therewith.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, first reading?
Aye.
Opposed?
Want to first, second reading?
Second.
All in favor, second reading of bill number thirty-nine ninety-four?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you, second reading, bill number thirty-nine ninety-four.
An ordinance authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement and other An ordinance authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement and other related actions in connection with the redevelopment of certain property in the downtown St. Genevieve Tax Increment Financing District, authorizing the execution of a TIF note in connection therewith, prescribing the form of said agreement and notes, and authorizing other related actions in connection therewith.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call?
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderwoman Codwell?
Yes.
Seven, yes, zero noes, one absent. Bill Number 3994 now becomes ordinance 3932.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Good luck. Bill Number 3995, first reading?
An ordinance authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement and other related actions in connection with the redevelopment of certain property in the downtown St. Genevieve Tax Increment Financing District, authorizing the execution of a TIF note in connection therewith, prescribing the form of said agreement and notes, and authorizing other related actions in connection therewith.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Move for a second reading?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of second reading of 3995?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, second reading, Bill Number 3995.
An ordinance authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement and other related actions in connection with the redevelopment of certain property in the downtown St. Genevieve Tax Increment Financing District, authorizing the execution of a TIF note in connection therewith, prescribing the form of said agreement and notes, and authorizing other related actions in connection therewith.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call?
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderwoman Codwell?
Yes.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Seven, yes, zero noes, one absent. Bill Number 3995 now becomes ordinance 3933.
Thank you. Bill Number 3996, first reading?
An ordinance calling for the general election of officers of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, to be held April 7, 2015, and providing notice to the general public.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? Bill Number 3997, first reading?
An ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Ron Coleman, President of Eric Scott Leathers, LTD, for reimbursement of eligible expenses associated with the Valley Springs TIP area.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Make a motion for a second reading.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, second reading, Bill Number 3997?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, second reading, Bill Number 3997.
An ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Ron Coleman, President of Eric Scott Leathers, LTD, for reimbursement of eligible expenses associated with the Valley Springs TIP area. Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call?
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderwoman Codwell?
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Seven, yes, zero noes, one absent. Bill Number 3997 now becomes ordinance 3934.
Okay, thank you. Any comments here, anybody? All right, any other business?
Yeah, I'd like to welcome Oaks Furniture to town. I don't know if anybody's made it out there for the grand opening. People should need to stop by there and see what he's got. It's at Sixth Trotman Court, it's behind the old Grant Hall's building, favor liner.
Same pictures, it looks nice.
And I was at a meeting at the Community Services Foundation meeting, and they were talking about the community event. Said Oaks Furniture is making a donation to our event, so that gives you an idea of the character of the people involved here.
You do inventory.
Yeah, I was quite surprised when you had to see the size of the inventory. Quite surprised.
Can Steve talk about what's going on over in Point Base with the sewer lines or whatever?
There was a sewer line blockage down by Dunsey Drive or Street, and Steve's here, he can talk to you.
The sewer line blockage actually started down underneath M Road, where the sewer line from Point Base eventually gets to. Goes from Point Base Drive down to M Road, turns towards Ozora, goes about 300 feet, and then it goes underneath M Road. And from there, it goes over to Dunsey Street. Somewhere between the manhole by Dunsey Street and M Road, there was a blockage of some sort. As far as what it was, I do not know. The line was jetted, it started flowing, camera'd the line, the line was clear, and the whole system drained back down.
I'd like to address a couple of comments that I've heard since that night. We have a schedule, and Steve and I have discussed this, and he confirmed it, where we routinely jet lines on that schedule. It doesn't mean somebody won't pour too much grease down the line in between and that it will clog up. And there's some evidence that this might have been grease, I don't know. But it wasn't any deferring of maintenance that contributed to this. It was just one of those things.
Have you ever had any trouble with that location before?
You know, that area is on the... I wouldn't call it routine, but all the lines in town are to be jetted at least once every three years, just for routine maintenance. That area out there, we performed a lot of manhole sealing and relining, so those lines have been jetted, they have been cleaned numerous times in the past few years. So, I mean, as far as, you know, lack of maintenance or anything like that, that area's been done more than most.
Thanks, Steve.
Yeah. Later in the month, on the 20th, the week of the 20th, hydrant flushing will be taking place. Just wanna remind everybody, if you notice some dirty water in your area, you may have to run your faucet for a few minutes, clear it up. Try to refrain from washing laundry during that period. Not so much the whole week, just the time your area has dirty water.
So, you're gonna skin... I mean, is that gonna be announced, when each area is being done, or what?
We have a map available that we try to follow, but depending on the clarity of the water in different areas, some areas take longer than others. We'll try to start in the downtown area on Monday, up around North Main, Lahey, pretty well go through the whole town, kinda like...
Keep it on the water faucet?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, Monday will be from like Merchant and Fourth, you know, to North Main, you know, that section, and then it'll be the west side of the North Fourth, and then on around each day. We'll finish up Friday in Valley Springs.
Thanks. I do certainly want to mention that, you know, this week, everybody's well aware that we lost one of our former city leaders and former aldermen for years, Mr. Ray Marver, and he certainly was a colorful alderman and certainly didn't hesitate to say what he felt, and Larry often had some very good ideas, and he was... He was a master, he did a lot for the youth and a lot for the Boy Scouts, and we are planning on dedicating a tree, or at least planting a tree on behalf of the city in his name somewhere, so...
With a plaque.
With a plaque. We haven't just decided where yet, haven't worked that out, but we are gonna do that for memory of Larry, so.
He was a good guy.
Yep.
Good guy.